Hello, calling the meeting. We're going out of suspension, we're back in session. Hope everybody had a nice lunch. Welcome home. So, Article 18, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Goodson.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate 55,867 to fund intergovernmental expenses for the Franklin Regional Council Government's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Aye. And a second by Mr. Alen. Please, talk to us.
Okay, so, this is basically our COG assessment. There was an increase this year of $1,396, which is 2.53%. There was reduction in this, so, for indirect expenses associated with management of our broadband enterprise fund, which is something we've been doing through some areas of the budget. Move that.
That's it. This article has been recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee Discussion. No discussion. Everybody adjusting lunch, does that always go?
Napkin.
Time for it. Okay then, all those in favor of Article 18, which calls on us to raise and appropriate 55,867 for intergovernmental expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 18 passes unanimously, Article 21.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Alen.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $192,389 to fund employee benefit expenses for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Second? Please, would you like to tell us about this article?
Not really.
Is this an increase from last year?
It is. It's an increase of $10,165, or 5.55%. It has to do with municipal retirement plan, workers' comp, unemployment insurance, health insurance, retiring health insurance, Medicare, and FICA.
Thank you. Well done. This is unanimously recommended by our Finance Committee Discussion. Your vote. All those in favor of raising and appropriating $192,389 for employee benefits expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Article 20.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $84,986 and transfer from free cash $2,780 to fund ambulance service expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I can't see who that was. That's good. And that's for our minutes, for those of you who are wondering. This has been recommended unanimously by our Finance Committee. Would you like to tell us about this, Mr. Carter?
No, just, it's pretty straightforward what our assessment is from Highland Ambulance, which is just shy of $85,000 plus the radio assessment that we have. It's only an increase of $907 over last year.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Howlett.
Judy Hopf, Black and Greens, and I have the somebody explaining the difference between Article 18 and this video.
Thank you. Who would like to explain this?
In the prior article, that is the radio assessment for the Franklin County radios, and that doesn't have to do with the ambulance, since the ambulance is intercounty between us and the rest of the world.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Ready to vote on Article 21? Okay, all those in favor of raising and appropriating $84,986 and taking from free cash $2780 for a total of $87,766, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 20 passes unanimously. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Goodson.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 and transfer from free cash $250,000 for a total of $325,000 to fund capital expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Aye. Okay, may I be second? Please explain.
Okay. So, these were the capital projects that we found to be the highest priorities for this year. So, if you get on the list, the, so, we have $20,000 for town hall repairs and maintenance, this is money we're putting aside, just what it says. $145,000, which is the full estimated cost for a new loader for the highway department. So, we get it from free cash, so we're not having to borrow on that. Putting aside $25,000 for bridge repair and maintenance needs, because like we mentioned earlier, we have a lot of bridges in this town, and we're starting to kind of go down the list. We're starting to assess, we actually got another different grant to have an engineering firm come in and assess the order in which those might need to be repaired. So, we're always, every year, putting the money aside for that. Another $25,000 set aside for the fire department, pumper tanker. $25,000 aside for a police cruiser, which is, we're hoping to do this over a couple of years, this is the first piece of money we're putting aside for that. $9,000 for those building Memorial Library projects. And $6,000 for the replacement of the World War II Veterans Memorial, which is a plaque that is in the downstairs of the town hall up front. The plaque has deteriorated, and at this point, can't be repaired. It's also a missing name, so, the veterans came to us, and so we're looking to try to get that just replaced. This also has $75,000 as additional funds for the transportation improvements. Again, just putting money aside for that, because we know that's a large capital expense that's coming up, likely to start in the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Now, this one on the Finance Committee does a slight change, correct?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, there is a change. In the warrant, as printed, it says that the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article by a vote of three to one to zero. That is now changed based on a vote that we took just before beginning of town meeting this morning. That should now read that we recommend approval of this article by a vote of three in favor, one opposed, and one recusal or abstention. Recusal is because one of our members is a member of the Town Hall Building Committee and wanted to not express an opinion on this, because there's going to be money going toward the Town Hall to facilitate work. And there was one opposing vote, which I should explain, in the sense that it wasn't that they were against the idea of capital expenditures, but there was one particular item, the highway loader, that that individual felt was not adequately described and analyzed from the standpoint of presentation to the Finance Committee. And the background on this is that we, at the beginning of the budget cycle, talked to the police chief, Beth Dyle, in particular, about the importance of her coming forward for her advocacy for a new police cruiser, with very complete analysis, rationalization, and description of why they would need a cruiser and so on. And we were going to use that as a stalking or as an example for other items. And she did a fine job of that, which led to allocation of monies for this police cruiser at first round payment. But we didn't ask the same degree of rigorous questioning we thought from the highway loader, and there was a sense that we probably weren't thorough enough on that. So, in some sense, that was our fault, and we probably, again, for next budget cycle, expect all capital expenditures to be more fully explained and described and supported with analysis. So, that's the background on that. So, it's three, one, one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Discussion. Yes, welcome.
Yeah, I have a question for Judy Hopf, Black and Greens. Can someone detail a little bit what the building library project is running, could be useful?
$9,000, I believe, is going to help us. Caroline, right, so I can go trusty. The $9,000 is, at this point, going towards electrical modifications, that the library are in lights, new light fixtures, more closeted, charging computers. And this is not paying for the whole job. The library is going to pay a portion of that, although we haven't got enough debt in estimate, so we're going to take the intended $5,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Hopf. Other discussion? Yes, Mr. Carter.
Susan Stark, Black and Greens. Veterans Memorial downstairs, I've examined it, and $6,000 seems like a lot of money. I just really wonder why it's that high, and if there isn't a more beautifully priced plaque that could be considered.
Thank you. Someone like to address that question? Head of way. Head of firm, mark your phone. Okay, good. This is working? Okay. Trying to answer your question. Name and address, please. Name and address, right, I see a little more. Wayne Farrell, Whitney Acres. Myself and Martin Patrick were asked if we would research the board, because it's in such poor condition. That was first put together shortly after World War II, and was out in the air in front of the library. And over the years, shortly after that, it was moved indoors because of the wear and tear on it. $6,000, the material that the current board is missing can't be reproduced. I don't know if it would want to be reproduced, because it never matched. There was names missing that we researched that needed to be added, that couldn't be added to the current board. And we went to Ed Brothers Trophy to try to get a similar plaque as this World War I plaque is, right here between these windows. And we did an estimate from them with the names that we have that are on the current board, plus the names that have been missing and never put on that board, including veterans of war. And we were given an estimate between $5,500 and $6,000. So, that's why this price is $6,000. Thank you. Is there a follow-up? That is your question?
Such a few in the opportunity. I will follow up and express my opinion that I think that it is absolutely worthwhile. However, the $6,000 price tag is too high, when there might be something more moderate that might be considered, given the many things that need to be funded in this town. I don't know if there is a procedure to have this voted on with a lower amount of money for the Veterans Memorial Board to have that. I'm just not very good on motions at town meetings.
You could offer a motion to amend, if you wish. Usually motions to amend have to be in writing. Let's see if you can make this crisp and clean, so that our minute taker can get the motion down. Want to make a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend for Article 21 to exclude the line Veterans Memorial for $6,000. And I additionally make another motion to give discretion to the--
We can only have one motion. Okay, I'm not sure we're clear about whether you want that $6,000 to come from. The $75,000 raised and appropriated with $250,000 voted cash.
I'd like the Veterans Memorial number to be less than $6,000, and I don't know how the Board should give a selective discretion.
You want it to come out of range.
What he said.
There is a motion to amend, seeking to eliminate the $6,000 for now, I think. I don't know how to make it less, because people don't know what they're voting for then. To remove the $6,000 for the Veterans Memorial, and to reduce the amount from raising and appropriating from $75,000 to $69,000. Is that your motion, Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to Mrs. Stark's motion? There being no second, the amendment doesn't go to the floor. Thank you. Further discussion on Article 21? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating $75,000 and transferring from free cash $250,000 for a total of $325,000 to fund capital expenditures, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Article 22, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Alen.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $1,940 to fund Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund Account for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Is there a second to the OPEP motion?
Second.
That would be somebody else.
Second.
Mr. Goodson graciously seconded. Okay. So, talk to us.
I'll defer explanation to Mr. Carter. I was giving the mic on OPEP. So, OPEP, as it's known colloquially around the office, is a fund that the state requires?
Acts.
Acts.
They haven't required it yet.
Right. That we can fund in the town budget. And it's supposed to cover, in escrow essentially, to cover retirement benefits, which is an ever-expanding balloon. And our contribution this year is $1,940, which doesn't really cover it, but it's a gesture. You want to expand on that at all? He does not.
This has been recommended to you unanimously by the Finance Committee as well. And I'd like to thank TO for explaining OPEP, and TC for not talking. I want to thank them for that. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating $1,940 to fund OPEP Liability Trust Fund Account, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? It passes. Thank you. Article 23, is there a motion?
Moderator.
Is how?
I move that the town appropriate $275,985 for the sewer wastewater treatment plant enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, as presented in the warrant.
Is there a second? Talk to us.
This format's just slightly different, bookkeeping than what we've done before. We are basically running the sewer treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, under around $170,000, which to my chagrin is going up. I'm a heavy payer, and I was real happy when it stayed around $150,000. But I had to vote to put it up, because I've been advocating for raises for our people for years. So, about half of this increase over the past two years is for the raises. And the other half is for us to get rid of the sludge. Not as happy of a thing as the other. But anyway, we're giving our people more. The sludge is costing more, because we have to haul it farther and farther away. Interesting concept of the R part of the whole global problem of waste.
Thank you. This article has been recommended by the Finance Committee unanimously. I thought sure the word sludge was going to bring up some kind of--
I tried, I tried.
You did a good job. No discussion, no comment? All those in favor of appropriating $275,985 for the wastewater treatment plant enterprise fund, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 23 passes unanimously. You good? Okay. Article 24, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $77,422 from the Broadband Development Appropriation Account, and appropriate $204,922 for the Broadband Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, as presented in the warrant.
Talk to us, please.
This is the first year, of course, of getting the Broadband Enterprise Fund going. Where it is most definitely a budget, trying to figure out when people are going to go live, when revenue is going to start coming in. Relatively conservative, but all-encompassing budget. Probably a little more conservative, we're hoping, a little more conservative on the revenue side than the expense side. But knowing that the first year, not everybody's going to get turned on at the same time, and it's not going to be for a full year. The money, $230,000 roughly, that we've appropriated over the last three years that we put into this fund, knowing that this was coming, we're tapping into that for $77,422 the first year, to get that going, in anticipation that the other $204,922 will be revenue from subscribers as they become live, let's say, from October through July of next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter. This has been recommended by the Finance Committee unanimously. Mr. Cope, would you like to?
Actually, Mr. Carter said everything that I wanted to say.
There we go. Questions, discussion, Mr. Berris?
Mr. Moderator. We would like to, as a Finance Committee, not only recommend this by four zeros, zeros you see in the warrant, but further explain our reasoning. Whereas in the article before, a Finance Committee would normally be looking askance at any kind of a slush fund, certainly a sludge fund had much to recommend. And in this instance, if I heard correctly, we're going to turn on people, so I need to all of that. Be recommended unanimously.
You know, I picked a lot to make me speechless. Really, you ready to vote? Well, then, let's. Article 24, all those in favor of transferring $77,422 and appropriating $204,922 for the Enterprise, the Broadband Enterprise Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 25, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Goodson.
I move that the town vote approve the following spending limits for the revolving funds noted below, pursuant to the actual revolving fund by law, and pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, as presented in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Alen, second. Anything to tell us about this?
Not much. I mean, this is just an approval of the revolving fund spending limits. Has to be voted on annually at town meeting.
And that's what we're being asked to do. This is recommended unanimously by our Finance Committee. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Howlett.
Judy Hopf, Black and Greens, and I'm here as the Park Commission Chair. And I would like to propose an amendment, please.
Yes?
Our park spending limit for the revolving fund is limited to $1,500. And two weeks ago--
I'm sorry. Could you tell us what the amendment is, and then explain why you want to do it? So that we know what you're being asked to do.
Okay. The amendment would read, "To amend Article Number 25 by increasing the park revolving fund spending to $3,000 a year."
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Now, would you like to explain the basis for your amendment?
Yes, two weeks ago, the Park Commission was informed that their application for a capital project was off the table for the warrant. We have a $4,000 project in the works with rebuilding the whiteboard chair and base. In our revolving account, we have about $4,000, and we would like access to most of that money to complete this project, now that the capital project has been eliminated.
Thank you. For the minutes, who seconded this motion? Mr. Pless? What we're now talking about is not the main motion, but about the proposed amendment to raise that $1,500 in the table to $3,000. So, discussion on the amendment. Yes, Mr. Alen.
Why not raise the limit to what you have in the account now, so you can expend all of it?
We've already overspent for fiscal year 2018.
So, this would be for future?
Correct.
Okay. I stand in support of the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of amending Article 25 by increasing for the park from $1,500 to $3,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The amendment passes unanimously. The main motion is so amended. Thank you. Any further discussion on the main motion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of Article 25 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 25 passes unanimously as amended. Thank you, Ms. Howlett. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Alen.
I move that the town-- I move that the town vote to accept the Mass General Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, as presented in the warrant.
As reflected in the warrant article? Yep, sure.
Second.
Okay, talk to us.
So, um, this law, adopting this law or accepting this law would allow for instances where, uh, the time, the time limitation for when people are allowed to register to vote is dictated by when the election happens. So, if we were to back up the number of days from the election to the final registration day, if that happens on a Saturday, that requires our town clerk to come in on a Saturday to get the zero people that come in to register to vote on the last day. Um, so what this would allow us to do is have those extended hours on Friday, preceding Friday, instead of adding a Saturday. Uh, historically, people do not take advantage of the opportunity to vote on the last day, this is Saturday.
To register?
To register.
Thank you. Um, we did get a second, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we did. So this, uh, there's no recommendation by our Finance Committee since it doesn't, uh, have an amount of money, is there discussion? Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote?
I guess I don't understand, maybe you could explain the frequency of times that this happens, where someone has to be here on a Saturday. Um, and I would also say that, you know, I appreciate your sarcasm that zero people show up.
Yeah.
But what if there's one person who does finally show up on one of those Saturdays and it's closed and they can't vote? I, I, I just don't understand why this is so important? And if you could...
Sure. Uh, I don't know how often this happens, um, because it varies, the calendar varies because of the date of the election. The calendar moves back and forth, so I don't know how big of a problem it is. Um, historically, people haven't come in and we staff it. So there's that. To address your concern about whether there is that one person who wants to come in, I agree with you. You know, it'd be great if they were able to take advantage of that. Uh, we haven't seen that happening. Um, there's plenty of opportunity to register before that last day, so there's that. But if you're concerned about that, then I would recommend voting against it.
I just asked the town clerk if she would speak to that question, which was raised. I breathed right in by town clerk.
So currently, um, I've had to work a couple Saturdays the last few times, and so it happens that it's fallen. The hours I've required to work is four to six and seven to eight. I haven't had anybody coming. I've also, where I've had a conflict on the personal side, I've asked Laura at the hardware store, as a registrar of voters, if she would have registration there and I put notices up there at town hall, and they have not had anybody, um, come there for like four to six times when they're open. Um, this, acceptance of this match on a law retreats Saturday as a holiday, so it worked the Friday and we would have the extended hour. So I would be here all day, um, 9:00 AM to 6:00, and then I would work seven to eight. So people still have the extended hour options. And nowadays, you don't have to come in and person to register, you register online, it goes up until midnight on the state website if you register online. Um, we also have, if you can't come down to get a, um, a registration form, I'm happy to mail it out, you can call. We have the drop box outside, so if people can't come to town hall to drop it off, they don't want to mail it, they can drop it in the drop box after hours and we would get it first thing the next morning. So there are other options.
Thank you. I saw a couple hands, is it still up?
I just had a thought.
Okay, Ricky Carroll, Main Street.
I would just wonder if it could be done by appointment on those Saturdays that happen at the ball on that particular day.
I'm seeing heads, let me hand you the microphone.
So if somebody was really having a difficult time, um, coming in, I would be happy to stay late one day, but if you accept this, um, law, you would have to, you couldn't come in on that Saturday if we accepted, it would have to be on the Friday before. But if somebody has a difficult time coming down during the day, I do do the select board meetings, I'm here in the evening every other Monday, so I would work with you to figure out a time when this would come down.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes, is there a follow up?
Um, so, can you clarify what you said about Laura at the hardware store, act as a registrar? Is, is that a wonderful, I don't know that she'd want to do that, but...
She, she is, okay, okay. Lauren? Lauren, she asked me about Laura as the registrar. We have three registered voters who have Laura in one of them, which is nice because she has, or has those hours that she can help out when there is some of this, um, conflict where I've had that she can do it there. Um, but as a registrar voter, she's been able to do that for us.
Further discussion on Article 26. Yet, Mrs. Given.
I, uh, Mary, it's Given, Mary, it's Given, Main Street, Ashville. I assume that, uh, the way this is ordered, particularly with the reference to holiday, will dovetail with the election law requirements that have led to, as I know Saturdays where it's open and nobody does come, but we know that this will be acceptable in terms of the election law requirements.
This doesn't even bear with saying, you know, we're voting or we offer weekend hours, we could still offer that. Um, this is just for, you know, the registration of voting.
But this, this will speak to the number of days and will make, uh, the Friday legally acceptable in place of, well, Monday and Saturday.
Correct, correct.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Given. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor of Article 26 to accept the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion carries. Article 26. Article 27?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote authorize the select board to enter into a 10-year contract with the option for a five-year extension commencing on July 1st, 2020, with a qualified vendor selected by the Mass D.P. through a competitive bid process for recycling processing services for the town, subject to the select board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject to town meeting approval in spring 2020 for funding, as presented in the warrant.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Atlantic. Talk to us, please.
So this will, this is special authorization for the select board to enter into a long-term contract with a vendor. Uh, historically, uh, or traditionally, uh, the select board would only be able to get involved with contracts up to three years. This obviously is significantly longer than that and we need the, the special, um, authorization. The, uh, this will be monitored by D.P., they're going to help us with our recycling. We do a tremendous amount of recycling in Nashville. Uh, we, uh, we get awards for, we get rebates for, we do all this. It is, uh, very cyclical. It is not like a lot of vendors are geared up to take our recycling and so forth. So these, I, our feeling is that the reason for this contract is so vendors can get set up, know that they're going to have customers, know that there's going to be an inflow of material, and they can gear up with the amount of capital they need to have these processing centers in place and run. Um, we'll be talking about this again, uh, next year, uh, before we get into this contract, but, uh, the, uh, the alternative would be not to recycle and pay the high tipping fees and so forth, that would, if it was going to a landfill or incinerator or whatever was happening, to dispose of our regular garbage, which really is, is not an option at all. That would drive our costs sky high. So, um, we're asking for this authorization.
So, Mr. Carter, I have a question. When you say we'll be talking about this next year, town meeting will have to approve of the contract that we enter into next year.
Right, and that's right in the article.
Thank you. Uh, this has been recommended, uh, five to nothing to nothing unanimously by our Finance Committee. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Culp?
David Culp Phillips. Um, my question or concern is about the length of this contract of 10 years. Maybe it's a good thing right now, or maybe it's not, because we've been reading in the news that many municipalities are now having to pay for recycling, whereas before they were, um, getting paid for it. And so it seems like the whole, um, economics of recycling right now is in flux. And I'm just worried that we would maybe be putting ourselves in a situation, um, that would not be beneficial to us for a long period of time. So I'm wondering whether there is some flexibility, or even if it's wise, to reduce the length of the term of this contract.
Mr. Carter.
Good point. Uh, the article is, is rather lengthy, um, but, uh, the state will be, uh, vetting this, D.P. will be vetting it, and it's headed to a competitive bidding process for recycling services, subject to the select board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town. So this wouldn't happen until after the first Saturday in May of next year that we'll be discussing this again. Then we'll have the bids, we'll have an idea of what is in the best, uh, interest of the town, and we'll also be able to have the recommendation from the Hilltown, uh, Resource Management, uh, group that we're prying up, that we pay dues to, that help us manage the transfer station along with all the other transfer stations in the communities. We use them as a resource, of course, to get the best guidance on that.
So if I understand correctly, I am in favor of this because, uh, at this point in time, having a, uh, a 10-year, uh, contract would put us in a strong position. If later in a, in a year, we find that these contracts aren't favorable, we could choose not to pursue them and have shorter-term contracts. But at this point, authorizing you to negotiate, essentially, or receive bids for long-term contracts would be in our interest.
Is that a yet? Is that a question?
Uh, no, it's a statement saying why I support it.
Got it. Thank you very much. Ms. Jones, did you have a hint?
Karen Jones, Allen Apple Valley. Ice cream cone.
Oh.
I just want to, um, ask you, I'm very interested in this issue. I think this is being changed all over the country, all over the world. Um, and I would like to hear how you could deliver, I guess with some of your meetings, when you're going to discuss it, but will there be citizen involvement beyond your kind words and actions?
Mr. Poissons.
Tom Poissons, Korean Room. So, this 10-year contract is nothing we've been, we're going to 10-year contract with a five-year extension under this would be completed. It's to the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility. And that's operated, it's operated by D.P., although they, that's what speaks in the article, the competitive bidding process. They're in the process now of bidding out who's going to run for the next 10 years. It's currently run by Waste Management. So, I think, like David mentioned, it's, it's a good, a strong point for us to be in a longer-term contract in this particular case, because otherwise we wouldn't know where recycling materials would be going for the next 10 years. We would have to plan. It's not very, we have other facilities around. We could end up in a situation, as the wastewater treatment plant was talking about, where they have to truck their materials further away. They may end up having to, let's say, Hartford, for example. So, the D.P. is currently working on a new vendor to operate the facility, or a similar facility. They kind of do a lot of work for us. We are mandated somewhat to recycle through the waste ban plan, so we don't have a lot of choices in recycling. We may very well see some of the revenue we receive from recycling diminish, but we'll still be recycling and have a place that we know we can plan on to bring our materials that will be operated by private vendor through the D.P.
Thank you. What about so much of Ms. Jones' question about citizen involvement in this process? So, would you like to address that?
So the, um, as Tom, Mr. Carter mentioned, the H.R.N.C., Hilltown Research Management collaborate to, um, there's two members of Ashville that are on that board, myself and Mike Skalski. Um, there's monthly meetings that, um, I think are posted on the H.R.N.C. website. They're usually in Williamsburg, people can attend. Um, and I think Catherine Casey, who's the administrator of H.R.N.C., is always very willing to, um, talk with people, accept phone calls, emails, et cetera. And I can get, you know, contact with her if you so wish.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Um, can I add one? I've been watching the recycling issue for decades and I, 20 years ago, heard that what was being collected from here was being thrown into dumps in New Hampshire. And that was a terrible shock. And I hear that we want it to be recycled, but the resources, I'm hoping this initiative can help us support industry to make them feel that they can count on all the community sending their materials. But it's a very risky time. I still am hearing about all of our carefully recycled stuff being thrown in landfills. So, that's my concern. That's behind my raising questions. And I will go to the meetings.
Thank you. Um, discussion. Are we ready to vote? Um, all those in favor of authorizing the select board to enter into a 10-year contract with the option for a five-year extension with the vendor as described, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 27 passes unanimously. Article 28, a citizen's petition, um, by Represent Us, Represent Us on Legislative Reform. Who's here to move this question? Ms. Dolph?
Lindol Conway Rowe. I move that the town vote to adopt this non-binding resolution authored by Represent Us, which is a nonpartisan grassroots movement, organization, supporting state and federal legislation to limit the influence of money in politics and promote free and fair elections.
Thank you. There is no recommendation by the Finance Committee since this does not seek, um, money. Did I ask for a second? I did not.
Second.
Second, Ms. Carter, second. Uh, would you like to describe, what we're talking about here, Ms. Dolph?
Certainly. So last summer, I attended a, uh, one of the Charmont forums where Josh Silver, who broke children and is one of the founders of Represent Us, was speaking about this organization, which recognizes that if we want to change the way politics work in the United States, for us to attend to Congress, those who have succeeded in a system where big money runs things aren't likely to be the ones to make any changes. It needs to start at the grassroots level. And this nonpartisan initiative is to have voters at a local level vote to express their strong feelings, so that our state legislatures can, can actually take some action. So, for me, some of the relevant elements of this resolution is that we support legislation that forestalls the influence of money in our elections through measures such as limiting the access of lobbyists, mandating full transparency in campaign financing, adopting public campaign financing, instituting automatic voter registration, ending gerrymandering, and instituting ranked choice voting to encourage civic participation and ensure fair representation. And so what this vote is, is for, if it's approved by our town... And so what this vote is, is for, if it's approved by our town, our town will be joining twenty-nine other towns in Massachusetts that have already voted on this. And more of our state legislators, more of our federal representatives would know that towns in Massachusetts feel strongly about this issue.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Ted Maristro, I wrote, you used the term ranked choice voting here. Could you explain more about what that means?
I know that the city of Burlington, Vermont uses it, and this year, I think Maine adopted ranked choice voting. So what, my understanding, this is a layperson's understanding of ranked choice voting, is that voters would vote for one, two, three, and if the first-choice person doesn't get a majority, that allows the system to look back at, okay, who's next? So I guess I don't know the particulars of how it goes on here, and maybe David can say.
I think I can tell, but, David, you want to explain?
Yep. I'm a big fan. So you rank all of your choices, and if the top one doesn't get fifty percent, then the one that had the least votes, then all of those persons' second-choice votes then get added in until you get somebody that reaches over fifty percent.
Is that clear? Thank you. Further discussion. Those good questions. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of this non-binding resolution aimed at limiting the influence of money in politics and promote free and fair elections, as read and explained in Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Article, that's been on lease, Article 29.
Mr. Mondria. I vote that the town adopt the resolution contained in Article 29, as written.
Is there a second? Who said that?
So this is a non-binding resolution in support of two bills that are currently in the legislature, the state and the House, to examine the seal and motto of the Commonwealth and recommend a design that accurately represents the historic and contemporary values of the Commonwealth. The twenty-member commission would include the Secretary of State, state legislators, and five reserve seats for Native Americans. I grew up in the Midwest, but I moved to Massachusetts fifty-four years ago, and since then I've been very proud to call this state my home.
Newcomer.
I have a long list of reasons why I'm proud of this state, but I've been encouraged to make this short, especially since it's the last motion of the town meeting. What I'm not proud of in this state is this legacy from colonial times, when the original stewards of this land, including the tribe after whom the state was named, were nearly obliterated through war, disease, poverty, and relocation. Like many of you, have little awareness of our state's seal, which appears on the state flag. And I'd like Delta to stand up on the stage again and show everybody this flag, because it's one of those ubiquitous things that shows up everywhere, but we never really take a serious look at it, at least I haven't. There are a number of symbols on it, and I hope that you picked up this flyer that was on the table, that shows all the different images that, excuse me, that come from the bodies of Native Americans who were killed in the seventeenth century. The bow, the arrow, the belt that was modeled after that comet. Most disturbing to me is that arm in colonial attire with the broadsword over the head of this Native American. The motto, which loosely says, "By the sword we see peace," reminds me all too much of that phrase that came out of the war in Vietnam, "We had to bomb it to save it." The state's seal has been changed a number of times since 1676, which was the seal of the Massachusetts Bay Colony, out of the mouth of that Native American who was not attired, but just had a swath of leaves strategically placed, and said, "Come over and help us." For thirty-four years, State Representative Byron Reston has introduced and reintroduced similar amendments to, similar legislation, only to have it locked up in committee. So this year, this resolution is going for maybe three dozen communities across the Commonwealth. A dozen have already accepted it, and within a week, Shelburne, Buckland, Conway, and Polk Ray will also vote on this resolution. We have a lot to be proud of in this, in this state, but we need an image for our state's seal that represents the best of our history and our values. Let's add Asheville to this list, encouraging our legislators to move from discussion into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I, I got a second, right? Ms. Carney? Barbara, that's right. Thank you. There is no recommendation from the Finance Committee, this not being a financial article discussion. Other than Ms. Fox Yarn, is there any other discussion? That's a clear comment, I think. Dr. Robinson? Here's an upgrade. This is live.
I am, I'm very happy to rise in support of this, of this resolution. I have lived in, oh, I'm also a newbie, came here in 1966, Massachusetts, from, I won't even mention the name of the other state, but anyway. I frankly had never focused on the, on the seal or the flag. And I am, it's been called to our attention recently by Native Americans that this seal and this image presented on the flag is really, really outrageous in many ways. And this is not the time to dwell on that this afternoon, but, but I think we owe our Native American neighbors and friends a very strong vote of thanks for bringing this to our attention. And I have been appalled to learn that it has been before the state legislature for some time now, and has never been reported out of committee. And that's just a form of stonewalling on this thing that I think is, is unacceptable. We now have two local legislators, Emily Lay, of, of, in the, serving in the lower house, and Senator Heinz, serving in the upper house, who are sponsoring this effort to get some action, get a hearing on this action, and have it reported out, so that the people of the Commonwealth can enter into this debate and get it resolved. So I am happy to rise in support of it, and I encourage us all to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. For those who don't know, Dr. Robinson was alive for that first Thanksgiving, so he can. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. How?
I just have a question for Molly. Is there another flag dissolving that people could appreciate? Do you know?
No.
I am getting my answer. Hang on a second.
This is the responsibility of the commission that would be set up to evaluate different images. If you have ideas, I think it would be great to send them on to Natalie Lay or to Adam Heinz, but as far as I know, no specific suggestions have been made.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I certainly, reading over the material and understanding, having a better understanding of the background, I can understand people's feelings on this, and that's not always my strong point, trying to figure out how people feel. I have a little difficulty. I mean, I understand moving forward on this, and it shouldn't be an issue that's been stonewalled and, and not discussed openly. At the same time, with our present situation, and knowing what resources are, for me to bring this up as a real point of interest to our representative or our senator, in light of all the other things that we would like to have happen and the support we would like to get from the state, there would be a lot of things on my list ahead of this. You know, we need to take resources and, and energy to put towards education funding and education reform. We certainly could all use in every community more money for roads and bridges. Criminal reform, criminal law, criminal reform that needs to be done. Opioid and drug programs, and, and those things are all kind of in line somewhere ahead of this, where we're asking the representatives and senators to really drill down on them. And I wonder if we wouldn't be caught, or the state, if they all got behind it, if it wouldn't be a little bit like the dog chasing the school bus, you know? What in the world does he do with it when he catches it? Because the cost, the flags probably would be the easy part, but changing every seal and every courtroom, and on every courthouse, and on every police cruiser, and on every state vehicle, and all those things, I just think would be so astronomical that it would cost us in other places from moving forward on things that, very short list, I mean, it's probably a much longer list of things that need to be addressed. But in my feeling, if you take the largest number that you can imagine, the way the state of Massachusetts operates, you take the largest amount of money that you think it would cost in quadruplet, and you still probably wouldn't have quite enough money to get this all done. Not that it isn't something that shouldn't be debated and looked at, but I do believe in the long run, it would steal much-needed resources from a lot of projects that every community in the state of Massachusetts could use otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I believe, okay.
Carolyn White, Asheville, North Carolina. I understand where you're coming from in terms of the finances, but I think that this is in line with a lot of the things that are happening in this country in terms of respect for the history of black people and respect for women. So that, I think, symbolically, it's taking responsibility for where we are as a, in a country, as a country, and doing that in our state. So I think it's the own of the finances.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Bees, do you want to address?
I agree that there are a lot of high priority items that are on the agenda and for our state. I think four hundred years is a long time to wait for greater respect. I think that there are incremental steps that can be taken, that it can be changed over time. I mean, I think that the new image can be adopted, and then as, I guess that would be part of the legislation that we have to come through, is how would that be implemented in what timing? But I feel that starting at least to move this into what is that new image going to be, and how do we make some reparations here for our really sad history?
Thank you. Further discussion? Dr. Robinson? Is there anybody that hasn't spoken yet? Dr. Robinson?
Very briefly, Tom, you and I have shared our admiration for Abraham Lincoln many times, and it is a deeply felt admiration for him. When it came time to abolish slavery and to pass the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, the cost of that was just unbelievable. It was enormous to cast off the burden of slavery. And yet, Mr. Lincoln felt it was a moral issue that you didn't calculate in terms of dollars and cents. And so we moved to adopt the Thirteenth Amendment. I think this is practically a singular kind of thing, that there is a moral issue here that transcends whatever costs taken about.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mrs. Given?
Mary, it's Given, Main Street, Asheville. I grew up in Massachusetts, in the Valley, with that flag, which I always loved because it had the Indian on it, the Native American on it. And when I grew up in the Valley, especially in grammar school, it was often an occasion for recognizing the role of Native Americans in establishment of Massachusetts and the country, are the name of our state. I understand people wanting to be sensitive. I'm not sure, well, not knowing what kind of flag I come out of that process, I personally would miss a strong vow to Native Americans as partners in the establishment of the colonies and original inhabitants. I would miss that connection, but that's just it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Comments? Questions? Are we ready to vote, Lauren, or Maynard? Looks like we are. So all those in favor of the resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
It passes. Thank you, Ms. Bees. That concludes our business for now. I just have a few more words to say. Words can't express how hard, how much work goes into today by the folks who are sitting at this table. Our town employees just, literally, they work themselves sick. In one case, literally, a town administrator is here despite how she feels. Whoops. Was that as good for you?
I'll let you know later, but.
Our town employees, we're really lucky. I think we're really lucky, and it shows. I, I think so many of you, if I look out here, so many of you work volunteer for important committees and boards and agencies of this town that make us happen, and some tireless work goes into making it work. So each one of you, just a very, very special thanks. This year, I'm so impressed, our Finance Committee, Kyle Taylor has seamlessly stepped in. There's some veterans of this committee who have worked so hard to make today happen. Kyle has always been a kid, literally, services his town, I want to thank him especially. There's a very special thank you from Miss of Mary. Ken Mary is. If it wasn't for the Kentucky Derby Day, another hour would be. On this board right here, it is such an incredibly efficient, thoughtful, smart Select Board that we have. Steve Gutchen is so impressive to me. She just stepped in and like it seems better than she's been. An asset, and a day from the get-go. And so, I can't say too much about anything, so thank you. This board, thank you so much for your leadership. It shows.
And here we have a round of applause for our moderator.
The real people I want to thank, all of you guys, is the Rice. Please do.
Allen Royce, South Street. I am a true newbie, 12 years, I think.
That's not right.
But I, he had 12 years, nine of which I've had the honor to serve on the planning board alongside somebody that I've come to know and respect, called as a friend, who's been on that planning board for over 20 years, is now stepping off. And I think he's done some good work. I know he's the kind of worker, you don't always make friends, through some controversial issues, but I'd like to recognize Michael Fitzgerald.
You might call him the best voice of any day. Mostly, I just want to thank us, the citizens of Asheville. There's nowhere else I'd rather live. How about you? Do I hear motion with your? You both did say, and they're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get out of here. Thank you so much.